And we've got some really special pieces to kick off. David?
I mean, I think the whole thing about gender equality is it means so many different things around the world. So in some parts of the world, it's actually about the fact if a woman speaks out, she puts her life in danger. In other parts of the world, it's about equal opportunities, equal pay. Kate?
And yesterday, you know, in the plenary session, we talked a lot about violence down to women. But here, we really want to talk about particularly about barriers in the workplace, whether it's in the business space or the political space. So we've got a really, really amazing thing going on here. So David, would you like to introduce this because this is special?
Sure. So what we'd like to do, probably the most famous businesswoman in the world today is Sheryl Sandberg, who is Mark Zuckerberg's partner in terms of running Facebook. She's created an amazing movement called Lean In. What we'd love you to do from One Young World is actually create Lean In circles. And we're delighted to have a little video from Sheryl to kick the session off. So if we could roll the video, please.
Hi, everyone. I am happy to be with you today via video. A special hello to my friend David Jones, who I know is so passionate about what you are doing there together. I wrote Lean In because men still run the world. Despite all the progress women have made, in no country or industry have women achieved leadership roles even close to our numbers in the population. There are huge cultural differences, different cultures all over the world. But the stereotypes we have of men and women are actually remarkably similar. All over the world, we believe men should lead, men should be assertive, men should make big decisions. We believe women should be communal, should give to others. All over the world, we call little girls bossy, a word we never use for little boys because boys are supposed to lead. All over the world, when I present to audiences, I say to professional audiences, if you're a man, please raise your hand if you've ever been told you're too aggressive at work. Couple of hands go up. If you're a woman, please raise your hand if you've ever been told you're too aggressive at work. My hand is up, as is most of the other women. These stereotypes are hurting all of us. It holds back our economic growth. Women are a hugely important part of the economy everywhere in the world. It holds back our corporate performance because we're only using the talents of some of the population to lead. And it makes us less happy personally. Data shows conclusively that when homes are more equal, when men and women share housework and childcare more evenly, those homes are happier, those marriages are stronger, and those children are better off. The good news is that I believe all over the world, people really want real equality. I've had an opportunity to meet with amazing women and men all over. And the increasing understanding of how important equality is, is something that makes me incredibly optimistic. I'm so glad to have the opportunity to talk to this audience because you are the future leaders. Each of you has demonstrated great leadership in your countries by tackling an important issue. I know you will continue, your influence will grow. So as you continue, no matter what issue you're working on, I urge you to think about the role women can play, the role women must play. I hope you join us at WWLeanIn.org. You'll find a growing community of women and men around the world dedicated to justice, to having the small conversations and the big conversations that move us to gender equality. You'll also find all the information on there about Lean In circles, small groups that form themselves, eight to 10 people who agree to meet together to support each other as they lean in. Equality is about women, equality is about men, it is about every girl and every boy. Together, we can create a more equal and just world. Thank you.
So I have to tell you a quick story about this. So I was trying to get Sheryl to come. She said, I'd love to come, but I really can't make it. And I said, well, maybe, you know, could you do a video for us? And she emails me back going, I'd love to do a video. So about a week goes by, I'm really busy, and I wake up a Saturday morning, shit, shit, I never asked Sheryl for that video. I know she's in New York next week. So I ping her a quick email going, hey, that video you said you'd do, maybe we could do it next week because I know you're in New York. And I get an email straight back from one of Sheryl's assistants, copying Louise. And basically, whilst I'd spent a week trying to remember to reply to Sheryl, they'd already shot the video, delivered it, and it had been downloaded. And I said, that's a great example of the complete incompetence of men and the efficiency of women.
That's why I love him. Okay. So in the past, we've had things like 2010, 2011, we asked you to get behind Global Dignity Day, you ran global dignity sessions all over the world for Prince Harken of Norway. So there's an action point for you today. And this from the bottom of my heart because I, as a woman, I am a huge fan of what Sheryl is saying in his book. I do believe that if we want the careers and the power we want as women, we shouldn't just expect to be given it, we should lean into what it is that we want. So if you're fired up by that, both the boys and the girls, please go home and set up a Lean In circle. Doesn't matter if it's four people, 10 people, or 20 people, doesn't matter if it's two people. Set up a Lean In circle, okay, where you can talk about these things, you could talk about the violence done to women that we were talking about yesterday, you could talk about the many, many women that many of you are helping with your projects, yeah? And to all of the men, you've seen and heard it, and I know that you all agree with this, always remembering, the better the position of women in society, the better the society, the better our world is. Okay, so first of all, I would like to, it's a slight change of order here, Davy. First of all, I would like to introduce you to a One Young World ambassador for 2010, who is the founder of the movement that was created called Women Up. So will you welcome One Young World ambassador Emmanuel Draz?
As you know, gender diversity is a very large issue, from sexual assault to equal salaries. At Women Up, we have chosen to adopt a business angle adapted to entrepreneurial matters. We have chosen to work on gender diversity in the workplace, how to ensure equal careers among men and women, how to fight against feminine self-discrimination, how to transform macho corporate culture into a more balanced one. When you study very deeply the subject of gender diversity, you quickly realize that there are two ways to tackle the issue. One, from a purely ethical point of view, women are needed inside organizations because they are 50% of the world population who is female, point. The second one is more tricky. Companies are looking for business case, trying to establish a link between the presence of women and business performance. But today, this link remains controversial. Women Up is based on another approach, and for that, we are considered as one of the most advanced organizations worldwide. We have observed that our generation, the Y generation, the millennials, is the first one in which both boys and girls share the same ambitions in terms of work-life balance. We know that work-life balance has been one of the main feminist demands for the three last decades. And we therefore observe today a transformation from a gender claim to a generational one. Indeed, today's companies are facing a strange phenomenon. Young boys and girls are looking for the same thing in a job, work-life balance, and they're ready to quit if they don't find it. What does that mean for companies? That means that developing and implementing strong gender policies that preserve work-life balance is becoming key to attract and retain the best talent of our generation. And this is economically valuable. So we have the business case. We have been able to establish a link between gender policies and business performance through the reduction of turnovers. Based on that, we have created three years ago, Women Up, a laboratory that aims at crossing the different point of views of proactive companies and young talent. Our objective is to co-build very modern and long-term gender diversity policies that takes into account our expectations and ambitions. In more than two years, we have raised the awareness of more than 100,000 people. We have convinced 15 among the most powerful companies in France. We have established privileged partnership with more than 35 schools, and we have even shot a video clip with Harley Davidson for International Women's Day. We are very proud of our action. I'm very proud of my team, 15 people. But we want to go forward. We want to convince more and more companies to trust us. And the main difficulty we encounter is that lots of companies don't think the millennials exist. They don't think we share the same expectation, life expectations, all over the world, beyond cultural differences. They don't think we have the power to change or save the world depending on the point of view. They don't really believe Mohamed Janouz and Kofi Annan. And so we have decided to prove it, to prove that we are the first globally connected generation, to prove that we are not only thinkers but also doers, to prove that if we are able to invent new paradigm on gender diversity, we are able to do exactly the same in all of the fields all over the world, education, finance, politics, entrepreneurship, social business, and so on. Consequently, we have decided to launch a crazy project, to write in three months from now, the first collaborative book by and about the new generation, written by 193 hands, for 193 people from the 193 countries recognized by the United Nations. All these people... Thank you. All these people will have one thing in common, they are builders, builders of a new world, inventors of new way to do business, to practice politics, to engage, to manage gender diversity, to develop social business, and so on, people that creates new models. We have already met incredible people from all over the world, ready to testify. We have already concluded a partnership with an incredible Brazilian startup, Webook, which provides us a web platform. We have already raised money to finance the operation. But we wanted to be in front of you, One Young World delegates and ambassadors, to officially launch the project. If you want to take part, feel free. If you want to feel your personal power, let's go. If you want to feel our collective power, please write, relate, testify, connect. If you are saving the world on gender diversity or in any other field, if you are a doer, if you are a builder, please help us to convince more and more companies that yes, the millennials exist, and yes, we are going to save the world, creating another one much more equal and diverse. Thank you very much.
So this is a really important session. I mean, I have two daughters, and I hope they grow up in a world where people judge them on their talent rather than on their gender. And I've seen probably the smartest person in the world I know is my sister. And, you know, she has faced obstacles in her career that I never had to face. And when I look at Kate, who we've actually just named the global president of our company, so Kate is now... Kate is now the most senior female in the advertising industry worldwide. Again, there's a whole bunch of comments and feedback that came, not because of Kate's merit but because of her gender. So we need to eradicate that. And so I'm delighted to introduce our panelists. And let's kick off with probably South Africa's most famous businesswoman, one of Africa's most famous businesswomen who is going to chair our panel, the former director of South Africa's National Treasury, now the CEO of the biggest bank in South Africa, winner of so many awards that the list goes on and on, but including South Africa's Businesswoman of the Year, Sunday Times Business Leader of the Year, CNBC Africa Woman Leader of the Year. Please welcome Maria Ramos.
For me, and the order's changed over there, okay, can we roll? Okay. And now, somebody who really, really had to fight to get out here to us, who had a visa problem at the airport, then got that sorted out, she was so determined, she got delayed by about 36 hours. She's the current African Businesswoman Entrepreneur of the Year from Ethiopia, Bethléa Malimu.
A couple of counselors here you met yesterday, so we'll do them quickly, but two amazing people. I start off with Fatima Buto. Fatih, would you come on?
Fatih!
And then Lauren Bush, who is our first delegate returning as a counselor.
Lauren? Lynn Lily, do Lily.
And finally, another counselor who you met yesterday, back again, Lily Cole.
And now, for me personally, a very, very special moment. When I was talking to Mr. Anan a few months ago, and he was asking me who would be coming to the summit, and I said, all of you. And he said, yes, I'll be there, but he said, what about the counselors? So we were chatting, and he said, oh, if you're going to be in South Africa, have you got Dr. Rampelé? And I said, I said, no, 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 I haven't, I haven't got her, but I know someone, do you, will you help me, Mr. Anan says, no, Kate, we'll see.
That's such a bad imitation.
David emailed me and said that Anthony Jenkins is talking about Dr. Rampelé. We had the honor of a phone conversation with her, and she agreed today, and as you know, we don't use One Young World as political platforms, but she agreed to be with us today because of the cause of Women Up. And I'm so excited and so honored to introduce Dr. Rampelé.
And it's really, really great to have the privilege of hosting this conversation this morning and to welcome the first, the ever first-up session hosted on the African continent. It's a real privilege, and I'm sure Rampelé will agree with me that for us as Africans, this is wonderful.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much for being here. I also think that what you just heard from Emmanuel frames the conversation that we are about to have. And I think this is a very, very serious conversation. We all know that discrimination against women is an ongoing challenge that we all need to embrace and deal with. And the panel we have here today are going to share with us their understanding, their insights, and their experiences of their own journeys in their own sectors of their of discrimination, and what they have done, how they've experienced their knowledge, their understanding of this very, very important topic. So my, my job here today is to get us to hear from this very distinguished panel what some of the issues are out there and how these really brilliant women have dealt with these really important issues. My own engagements with women across the world have highlighted some really important issues for me. And one of the issues has been how common, how common the experiences are, how common the struggles are, how common the hopes, the aspirations, the ambitions, the fears that women have across the world. So whether I'm talking to women in Hong Kong or Singapore, or London or New York, or indeed in Kabira, in Nairobi, in Kenya, or in Johannesburg, women have the same issues that they're dealing with. They may be experiencing them differently, but the issues are ultimately the same. We've all dealt with similar struggles, we all have the same hopes, we all have the same sets of ambitions. In South Africa, my own country, we've got an unbelievably progressive constitution. And I know Rampelé is probably going to talk a little bit about this. I think, I think one of the challenges we face is how we continuously ensure that the spirit and more than the spirit of that constitution continuously improves the rights of women in our country and the, and the achievements we've gained, made so far, get taken and built on into the future. There was an interesting statistic in a report by the World Bank that really struck home for me, and I thought represents much of what we still have to achieve. And the statistic is the fact that although women represent 40% of the labor force out there, we still only represent 1% of the world's wealth. And I think if there's something that brings home how much work still needs to be done in this space, that for me, it's just one statistic, but perhaps a statistic that is emblematic of how much still needs to be done. So with that as a little bit of background, Bethléa, maybe I can turn to you and ask you to share some of your experiences with us.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here today and to meet really good people around me, and I'm happy. I grew up in Ethiopia, and when I grew up, I have been experiencing a lot of things. For example, I work for organization which is an NGO, and I see how people work in NGO and what's the message for women. And why I'm saying that is when I'm about to start my business, I always think I can go to one of the organization, I can get support because they do have a special program or project for, to empower women. But when I go to one of the organization, my experience starts from there. They told me to come back with a proposal, and which I did. And after two weeks, I follow up with a gentleman there, and he told me that they don't have any funds to support me with my business. I said, okay, I'll go to another organization. Not one time, two times, but three times I get denied. So I was like, am I not a woman who's supposed to support? So I said, probably this organization are not there to support women who have a dream, a big dream. So I said, I am not going to quit or I'm not going to stop what I'm doing because people are not supporting me. In fact, that experience opened my eyes to say, I'm going to do what I'm doing by my own without any support. And it makes sense if I break out the box that people put in front of me. That's why I'm here today, actually. I break that box because people always telling me when I grow up, you know what, you're a woman, you don't have any idea. Even if you have, you have an idea, it's so difficult for you to break the market, always. So I start putting together my group, my team, who are really good because my plan was to use recycled material that we can get because we don't have a lot of money to import a lot of product from outside. I can see the opportunities because people deny me. If they don't deny me, probably I go in another road, bringing a lot of materials from outside, do something else. But when I see the people around me, they are talented, and we had a lot of materials around us to play with, to come up with really beautiful products. That's what we did. But today, I am not saying I am a woman, but I am a person. Because I am a person, I am facing a lot of problems. But I personally believe that all the problems have solutions. One of my, my responsibility in my company is to see the performance of the employees. So when I see the performance of the employees, women who have children doesn't perform as a woman who doesn't have the children in my company. So the solution for that is, I'm always talking about the solution, I don't like talking about the problem. The solution for that is that what about creating a small daycare for workers inside our factory? So that, we go ahead, we did that. And amidst, we see women who have the children performing just like a man inside the company and then outside, everywhere. So today, I strongly believe that empowering women and empowering men at the same time, because you don't know it, how you empower another woman. We, we let people, for example, men who's working for sorobos, to bring in their small childrens to the daycare. What does that is, the result is, we're empowering women who doesn't work for us by default, right? So we're freeing women by opening small daycare, and then we're breaking the culture that we have, the culture in Ethiopia. Even if you're, you're professional, even if you have a long way to go to meet your goals as a woman, once you have the children, you're, you're, you're the one who's taking care of your child. So basically, now what's happening in Ethiopia is because of the change, because of urbanization and other, other, other changes, families are leaving different places before families are taking care of the child, and you can leave your child somewhere else. Because of that diversity now, it's a little bit tough for women and men to work at the same time.
Thanks, Bethléa. Fatima?
So there was, there was a lot of, there were a lot of very important issues that were raised by Bethléa. It's believing in yourself, it's persevering, it's breaking cultural barriers in many respects. I wonder if you can share with us some of those, some of your own experience, Fatima?
I'm going to share a very recent experience. We were all here yesterday, listening to the incredibly brave delegate speak at the Human Rights Plenary. And all the delegates spoke about overcoming huge adversity with the support of their community. And I was sitting on this stage, and I was wondering why it is then that we spend so much time separating ourselves, men versus women, north versus south, strong versus weak. And I thought, how lucky it is for governments that we speak their language, and how easy it is for governments and states and powers to separate us, and how easily we fall into those divisions, into those boxes, like Beth Maham said, and how easily we live by them. So I left yesterday's plenary, and I went back to the hotel room, and I opened my computer, and I saw that Pakistan, well, the Sindh government, Sindh is the second most populated province in Pakistan, to give you some idea of scale, Karachi, the capital of Sindh, my hometown, has like 20 million people in it, just about. So it's an enormous place. And the Sindh government has just decided that they're going to ban Skype, they're going to ban WhatsApp, they're going to ban Viber. This is in addition, mind you, to the 13-month-long existing ban on YouTube across Pakistan. This is in addition to 20,000 and counting websites that have already been blocked for objectionable material. This is in addition to cellphone packages that have been banned. You know, you get 300 minutes if you buy 500 minutes and free late-night calls. Those have been banned so that millions of poor cannot communicate, cannot reach out to each other. Impressively, Pakistan has also banned 1,500 words, which you cannot use in a text message. We ban words. So now we're banning Skype and, and Viber and all these things. And the reason they give us is terrorism. Because obviously, before the internet and before instant messaging, there was no terrorism. And there was no violence, and everyone was happy, and you all sent flowers to your MPs and things like that. And I was looking online, and when people started to complain, when young Pakistanis, oh, on the internet, they're still allowed to use, started to complain, supporters of this government censorship attacked them. And they said, oh, these are elitist, these are elitist concerns, these are trivial, these are upper-class problems. How many of you use Skype or WhatsApp or Viber, just a shorthand?
Wow.
Okay. They're wrong, they're wrong, not just because we're in this room saying they're wrong, they're wrong because communication and human contact are our most primal needs. They're the reason you've come from 190 countries to be... They're the reason you've come from a hundred and ninety countries to be here today. They're the reason Bethlehem has travelled thirty-six hours delayed. To come here. They're why you're not sleeping so that you can be here from eight in the morning till night, expressing yourself, taking information, and hopefully travelling back to Dhaka, to Karachi, to Nairobi, to Dublin with that information. It's a fundamental right. And what we have to do, I think, if we want to keep these rights, these very basic rights, is we have to stop speaking power's language. And we have to reject this narrative of us versus us, of men versus women, of black versus white. But we have to do it. We have to do it because our fight is so much larger. And the only way we have any chance of succeeding at it is if we're all together. And so I really hope we can move out of this sort of me versus you thing. And maybe even cut out the why in One Young World and maybe just be one world. Because otherwise, we'll still be here in twenty years' time talking about discrimination. And I'd really, really like that not to happen.
Good point.
Sorry for ranting.
So we need to be more integrated. We need to get beyond the point where it's about gender. It's about the issues.
Yes, and our connections. That was beautiful. I'm so angry.
Maybe I can turn to you because that was really powerful. And we need to, we know, I guess Fatima's point is we know we have won when we can stop talking about men and women and we're talking more about the issues. But there is a very basic reality here and that we are quite a distance from that, which is why we still have these issues on the table. And I think, you know, those are the same. You come from, you're in an industry that's very female.
Now male, actually.
And quite, I suppose. But it would be quite interesting to get your perspective.
Yeah, that was really powerful, thank you. And I completely agree. And I think that saying that we need to stop talking the language of power is a very poignant point. It's not to say that it's not worth having dialogues like this, but ultimately, hopefully, that is the goal, whether the issue is race, gender, age, etc., even species, I would argue. So when I was asked to be part of this panel, actually, my first, I have to admit, instinct was I had a little bit of apprehension about being part of this dialogue because I find, one, it's so complicated and I feel it's not as simple as just women being kind of suppressed. I think there are issues on both sides of the equation. Arguably, in many cultures, they're more self-evident for women, but I think there are also, you know, kind of the cultural distinctions we've created between male and female have repercussions negative for the masculine too. That said, I did think it's important to bring about this dialogue. And I'm not going to pretend I have answers or even try and give strong opinions, but just try and be part of a kind of a dialogue around the issues. I've had probably an interestingly different experience to maybe some of the women on this stage in my life whereby I've probably been one of the very few industries beginning working fashion from fourteen that actually gives women more power than men. And women get paid more than male models, for example. And it's a very female orientated industry. I've also had a kind of a long time in academia, which at least in my experience was quite genderless. You know, your papers are marked in a genderless way. And now, interestingly, I'm working in technology, which is a very male orientated space. Yeah, I don't feel, maybe it's just because of my experience previous, I don't feel that because I'm a woman, that's limiting what I'm able to do. And it's actually quite interesting when you're in a room full of men and I feel like they're actually slightly surprised and they can work to your advantage sometimes. So I feel like I haven't experienced, I haven't personally really experienced feeling inhibited by the fact I'm a female and I've been brought up by a very strong woman, so I'm sure that helped. That said, I am very mindful of the bigger, broader issues and, you know, like the economic implications of being a female and just the very clear facts that do point to problems potentially. And I think it's important that we create a dialogue that looks at both sides of the spectrum because I think that a lot of it comes from kind of cultural, as several people said here, kind of cultural understandings of roles and the role of the woman, whilst that is often in a non-economic context and in a world that's so governed right now by economics, disempowers women arguably. It also means that when it comes to things like family issues, sometimes men are disempowered in that equation. I've had several male friends who've, you know, struggled with legal rights to see their children, for example. And I think that those ideas of what the male and the female roles are are very, they're very old. And they're kind of old architectures that I think are hopefully starting to break down. And we need for both men and for women to empower people to make choices that are relevant to themselves, whether that is leading a more kind of business orientated role in a family or leading a more kind of family housekeeping role, regardless of gender, that allows that choice to happen. Yeah, regardless of gender. And so I hope we're moving that way. And one other final thing I'll say, which again feels maybe is slightly contentious, but it's something I've been thinking about the last few years and feels potentially poignant, is I've been working on trying to build a gift economy as a platform. And in the process of doing that, reading a lot of different economic texts and trying to get kind of a layman's understanding of economics. And one of the economists I've met in this journey, who I really admire, her name's Genevieve Vaughan, and she's a feminist economist. And I'd never, I'd always kind of avoided the word feminism because for this reason, I kind of felt that it, you know, it seemed to me to create a polarization, whereas I'm always trying to break down polarities. And I read her book Forgiving and she argues, and I'm not going to take a judgement on it here, but just put it with you, that we've existed in an exchange paradigm for a very, very long time. And, you know, that's most self-evident in money as the kind of main means of communication, but operates on many levels. And we assume this is the natural human way of being. And so we assume this is the natural way to interact with one another. But actually, she argues there's a gift giving kind of culture that hasn't got numbers on it. So we don't kind of recognise in such a linear fashion, but is a big part of our ecosystem and is actually how every single human and every single person in this room came into the world through kind of, through the family context that is a gift giving culture. And that brings me to my final point, which is the one thing, regardless of wherever any of us came from and our race that we all have in common, is we all have a mum and a dad. And we all have relationships to the masculine and to the feminine. And I think that bringing into balance our own relationships personally with those kind of two ideas and two entities is fundamental to trying to balance the kind of bigger issues we have of the kind of masculine versus feminine.
Great. That's a really interesting and important insight. And I think I want to come back to it because there's a really important dimension there about whether we can really empower ourselves without really empowering men and empowering boys and how do we do that and where do we start? And, you know, we talk a lot about empowering girl children, but you really have to, you have to change perspectives. You have to empower both girl and boy children. And I think that's really important. Lauren?
Yes.
To you, because I think it would be really good to get some of your perspectives.
Yeah, I mean, sort of like Lily, I feel very blessed to have been born where I was born and when I was born. And I say that because I was brought up to believe I could do anything, be anything. I should strive to get the best education, the best job. So I owe a lot of that belief to my parents, obviously. And I, but my mum made sure growing up that I knew, you know, her mum had no choice to work. She was a total housewife, never had a babysitter even. And my mum was told, okay, you can become a nurse or a teacher. So she became a teacher. So I feel lucky, you know, one generation behind to have been brought up to believe I could do anything, be anything. But that belief, my world was kind of rocked when I started travelling to many, you know, very of the poorest countries around the world. And I was obviously really taken aback by the fact that women, you know, aren't taught that. I just thought it was a given, to be honest, in some ways. And you hear, and there are many gender issues still in America, for sure. I'm not saying there aren't. But I was really surprised in one of my visits, I went to Chad. And anyway, it was a very agriculture society. And it was the heat of the day. It must have been like a hundred and twenty degrees Fahrenheit. And women are in the field, tilling the field, heat of the day, with babies on their back. And the men were sitting in the shade having tea and not expected to work. And it just, I was so angry after seeing this. And most, you know, farmers in Africa are women. And like you said, they don't control the money that their family earns from their hard, you know, earned labour. And I was so struck by that, that I ended up writing my thesis in college about gender issues in the developing world because, you know, coming from the situation I had come from, and I think not maybe realising exactly how privileged that was to grow up and believe you could do anything and be everything, anything you wanted to be, to then go and experience or see so many people and women in different cultures who just aren't brought up with that same belief was really shocking to me. And it still is. And I would say, the thing I find hopeful is that, you know, if we live in a world, it's so interconnected, we're, you know, constantly online, even though in some cultures, I know it's more censor, unfortunately, which is a huge issue. But the more and more girls and women are exposed to different ways of life and the fact that, you know, certain things like genital mutilation and, you know, taking their family assets into their own control, that they have, you know, the power and right to be a part of that. The more they're exposed to that in other cultures, I think the more progress, you know, obviously we can make. And it's a term called cosmopolitanism. And I think that's what we're all here experiencing. And I, that's the one thing that kind of gives me hope.
I think that's a very important point because if you look around this audience and you think about One Young World, it's exactly about that. It's about, it's about us being able to bring, to come together from so many different places, so many different nations, from so many different cultures to share experiences, to learn from each other. And you look at this panel and, you know, really accomplished women with so many different experiences and so many different cultures. And yet, you know, when you talk, there's a common thread about the things that, you know, how the experiences, but a different approach to each of the experiences. And also it shows where we've come from. And I'm going to turn to Mampela. And, I mean, as an activist myself, you know, she was one person I looked up to. I've looked up to all my life. And a real stalwart of the struggle in our country and South Africa and what we have and what, you know, what human rights has been about. You've had a long history of fighting for human rights and for women's rights. And you've seen it not just in our country, but you've seen this play out across the world. And I've heard you say many, many times, back to Lily's point really, that this is not just about, this is not just about women, but it's about, it's about changing attitudes of men and women. And I wondered if you wanted to build on that.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to talk to these absolutely amazing faces and cultures. And the energy in this room is really the energy we are looking forward to, this One Young World. Because that's what this conversation is about. The starting point is a self. You cannot be a change agent if you are not changed inside. And that's been my journey for forty-five years, always working at making sure that my mindset is not polluted by the power games that are playing around me. And that is why the issue of not falling into the trap of the power language can only be secured if we live in harmony with the values that are coherent. Your personal values, your professional values, your political values must be in sync. Maria talked about our progressive constitution. Now, before that constitution was forged, we as young activist students worked it out that for as long as we do not free our minds to have the self-respect, the self-worth as black students. And then, of course, it's very quick to move from there to say, what about women? I'm a black woman. So what does that mean? It means I have to free my mind from the inferiority complex of being black and of being woman. And then from that point onwards, I was free. Long before nineteen ninety-four, we were free. And that's very important because the world we want to see, this One Young World, starts inside you. Once you accomplish it inside, it's there because now it's just implemented. And so my privilege is to be able to be in this conversation as someone who sees her role now as building the bridge between my generation that fought for freedom and your generation that now must make this freedom work in this country, on the continent, and in the world. And the issues of gender inequality speak to the unfree mind, the mind of men who need to oppress, the mind of women who are queers to oppression, and the mind of all of us who stand by and watch this happen. Which is why I've gone back into the trenches to fight for the freedom that is there on paper in South Africa. But twenty years on, the majority of South Africans are still living in poverty. And the majority of those are women and children. And why? Because those who are entrusted with the governance process have not freed their minds. They don't live by the values of our constitution. If you live by the values of human dignity, equality, and freedom, there is no way you are going to steal somebody's money. There's no way you are going to slack at work. There's no way you are going to oppress somebody else because you see yourself in them. And so your point about the unity of humanity and unity of men and women comes from that inner space. And so for me, the key, and I hope that your gathering here together will enable you to free your spirits. Once your spirit is free, no one can imprison it. And that's been my luck.
So you can see, you can see the passion. You can hear the passion. You can feel the passion from Mampela. But you can also hear the passion from all of our other panellists. And I think we've had a very rich conversation here today. And you can see as Mampela and feel the passion in this room. I look around and I, like Mampela, believe and feel that everyone in this room has the potential, the know-how, the capability to change the world. And I really mean change the world. This is the generation that can and must change the world. You are the flag bearers of a better world. And you must go out there and really, really do it. I can tell you that I certainly know that I work in an organisation in Barclays where making sure that we live by our values is something that our chief... making sure that we live by our values is something that our chief executive, Anthony Jenkins, has made a priority for our organization. If we as a corporate can put that at the center of who we are, how we do business, that must be a good thing. This generation, your generation, and the generations that come after you have the greatest opportunity to make the world that we are living here in a much better world. So go out there, go make a difference, go make this a world where gender doesn't count, where race doesn't count, where sexual preference doesn't count. This can and must be a world that is different from the world that has come, that has been there in the past. Thank you very much. There's no time for questions, I'm sorry. Sorry? No.
We can't take one question?
Can we take a question? Yeah. Okay, one question.
We need a male voice.
We need one male voice. Right.
So I've been coming to One Young World for about four years. I've never stood up by a mic or anything like that. But I'm actually traveling around the world for 14 months, learning about global issues and development at the moment. I understand the value of this session, but I'm, I, I find it really odd that as a white man from a Western country, I'm standing up here encouraging for next year at least, the inclusion of talking further about issues like female genital mutilation, human trafficking, and all those other issues which are very repressive to women all across the world. I understand that a lot of what we're doing is corporate organized, mainly because of the fact that we've got a lot of corporates here. But I think the platform here that we've got now is extremely important to start raising awareness of those and encouraging big business to make those attitude shifts. I only have one ask, I only have one ask, and that's next year, we try and address those issues as well. Because whilst I obviously respect all of you for what you've done, and I'm shaking because I'm a bit, you know, a bit like on edge. Sorry, guys. But yeah, I just want to get that addressed, because it's, it's starting to get ridiculous. And there are so many women that I've met this year alone who are really struggling, and it needs to be brought into the main media. Sorry, thank you very much.
For the record, though, there was a wonderful delegate yesterday who did speak about human trafficking. And I think when you get together next year, there's also, we had a question about sexual violence towards men, which we never talk about, and also LGBT issues. Stevie there to talk about female genital mutilation? Absolutely, Warren Stewie was a counselor. In Zurich, we did have a session on that.
Can I also say I work with a charity called SAFE, S-A-F-E, that they operate in Kenya. And they, much, much of their work is to do with trying to break down stigmas around AIDS, but they also do a lot with female circumcision and genital mutilation. And so if anybody's interested in learning more about those issues, look at SAFE's website and there's information there.
Okay, so I think, I think the point is well made. I think if you speak to us, I certainly work personally with a number of charities that deal with HIV and AIDS, not women mutilation. But I think it's a very well-made point, and we'll take it up with the organizers. But thank you for raising it. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
And hopefully, in maybe 10 years, we won't actually have to have a session about empowering women, because it will just be normal in the same way that, you know, 50 years ago, people used to smoke and didn't think it led to cancer. Hopefully, we can sort of eradicate this. But I think at the moment, we really do, because, and it's on every single male in this audience and in the world, we can actually do a lot to help. So talking of males and females, we're now going to do a vote, but this is for the women in the room only, so if the men could keep their handsets down. And the question is this, do you believe that your gender has negatively impacted your work life? So if we could answer yes, no, or not sure. Interesting.
That's progress.
But the yes should actually be zero, so, you know, 39% is not good.
Okay, same question to the men only. Do you believe your gender has negatively impacted your work life? There is a difference, huh? Okay.
So listen, this is a huge, and they've actually, they've actually walked off, but a huge round of applause for our counselors from that session, if you could hear us backstage. And if there are two big things that need to happen in the world of business, I think the first one is that we need to get to a world where women have the same opportunities as men. And the second one is we need to get to a world where business is much more socially responsible. And it's an absolute pleasure and honor to introduce our next counselor. He's somebody who is here at the very start of One Young World, talking unbelievably passionately about how business could be a force for good, how banking could be a force for good. And at the time, he, he just ran the consumer part of Barclays Bank. And this passion and this conviction, I think, played a key role in actually leading to him running the whole of Barclays Bank. And what, you know, it is not easy when you are the CEO of a big global company to stand up and take the incredibly brave stance that Anthony Jenkins has taken. And I think what, you know, what we have loved watching from One Young World is he has taken his beliefs and driven it through an entire organization, challenged an entire organization. And he is probably doing more than any person in the world to change the world of banking, to change the world of business. And it's an absolute honor and pleasure to welcome to the stage Anthony Jenkins.
All right, then, good morning, One Young World. I can't hear you, you were partying last night. Good morning, One Young World. All right, all right. My name's Anthony Jenkins, I'm the chief executive of the Barclays Group. Thank you, Barclays people. Two years ago, I stood in front of your predecessors and talked about the world. And I said that the world faced some very, very difficult problems. Climate change, demographics, the shift of power from east to west, from north to south, the fact that there's a billion people in the world with not enough to eat, a billion people in the world who are obese. We have these incredible, difficult, long-term problems. And yet, our institutions, civil society, the media, politics, business, the financial world, is increasingly geared to the short term. And if you ever need an example of that, look at what's happening in Washington DC. It doesn't matter what your politics are, it's not good, it's not okay for our leaders to abdicate their responsibilities. They have to step up. It's not okay. It is not okay for leaders. And this is where I agree with Bob Geldof on one level. On one level. Bob would say, our generation has screwed it up. He might not use the word screwed, he might use another word, but you, but you know what I mean. Okay? I agree with him on that. But I don't agree it's too late for our generation. Our generation can't stand up here and put it all on you guys. We can't, it's not okay. Leaders have to lead. Leaders have to lead. And leadership's about a privilege, it's about a privileged position that people like me have to make a difference in the world. Now, what is that difference? In essence, commercial enterprises are powerful organizations. They have the ability to change the world through what they do, through acknowledging their social responsibilities, acknowledging the need to serve not just their stakeholders, not just their customers or clients, not just their own employees, but also broader society. And that is really what I have been trying to do at Barclays and what I've been trying to do in my business career for many years. Last year, I stood in front of your predecessors and we talked on a panel about purpose-driven organizations and how purpose-driven organizations would be better at having more impact in the world. And I made a commitment to your predecessors that I would put a purpose at the heart of Barclays. And I promised them that I would do that, and that is what I did. On January 19th of this year, I launched to the whole 140,000 people in Barclays our goal, our purpose, and our values. Our goal is to be the go-to bank. It's not complicated. It's where people go to do banking. It's not complicated. Our purpose, helping people, people, we're all people, your people, I'm people, their people, these guys are people, we're all people, we live on the same planet, we breathe the same air, we drink the same water, we're all people, right? It doesn't matter if you're me, it doesn't matter if you're David Jones, it doesn't matter if you're Kofi Annan, it doesn't matter if you're Bob Geldof, it doesn't matter if you live in Soweto, doesn't matter if you live in New York City, in Beijing, we're all people. Our job is to be people on this planet, right? We have to be people. So that's why we talk about people, helping people. We're a bank, we're here to help people. And we're also here to help people achieve, achieve their ambitions and achieve those ambitions critically in the right way. In the right way. And if there's one criticism you can level at business in the last three to five decades, it's that business has not done things in the right way. Now, we have to pair that goal and that purpose with values, because values is what defines culture. And so we've set five values for Barclays. Maria referred to them previously. We talk about respect, integrity, service, excellence, stewardship. They're the values that define the culture of Barclays. We are on an amazing journey. It is amazing in its ambition and aspiration, but it is also amazing its complexity and challenge. There are many people around the world who do not expect us to succeed. There are some people who want us to fail, because they are wedded to the old way of doing things. They're part of the generation that has failed and has given up. But it's not okay to give up. It's not okay, we have to change. And so my commitment, as long as I have this job, is to pursue this agenda at Barclays and to talk about why I believe it's the right thing, the right thing not just for society, but the right thing for us as an institution. And finally, just to close, a couple of thoughts on leadership. There are two things that really matter about leadership. One is you have to be authentic. If I stand up and say that our purpose is helping people achieve their ambitions in the right way, then all of my actions must be guided by that, and all of the actions of Barclays must be guided by that. That is not the case today. We are in the middle of an enormous change, but it is my absolute resolve that it will be in time. And the second thing about leadership is you have to be relentless. You have to be relentless, because I think, as Kofi Annan said yesterday, things go wrong, things don't go the way you want them to go, and you have to pick yourself up off the ground, and you have to go forward. This year, I took 150 of my most senior leaders to Kenya. We went to Kenya because I wanted them to see what's going on in the developing world. And we went out in small groups and we visited lots of different parts of the community. And we saw great projects addressing very difficult problems. And my leaders came back and said they were ashamed, ashamed, at how much they had complained about lack of resources when they saw what people in the developing world were achieving. And there were many great stories, but there was one story, and I think it was from an orphanage for babies with AIDS, where a group had gone to see the leader of this orphanage. And she had said to them the following, and this is key about change. When you're scared, you have to be brave. And when you can't be brave, you have to be braver. And that's the essence of change. A lot of people will stand up here and say, you're the future, you're the leaders, go from here and lead. And I agree with that, and I agree with that. But I am not going to stand here and put the responsibility on you guys. I put the responsibility on my generation also. Whether you're in business, in politics, in civil society, in the media, we all have to step up, because the problems of the world are so complex. But I'm an optimist, I believe if we do this together, we can solve these problems. So I don't want to say to you, go from here and lead. I want to say to you, go from here with me, with my counselors, and let's fix this thing together before it's too late. Thank you very much.
And don't underestimate how bold it is for the CEO of one of the world's largest banks to take that position. And also, if you, anybody who's been living in Britain or following what's going on, it's driving unbelievable change through Barclays. So we're absolutely proud and honored to call Anthony a counselor. So we asked you to submit questions, we have three of them that we're going to actually have the time to actually pose to Anthony. And I'd like to welcome up on stage firstly Kristin Asey from the US, who's the co-founder of Ally Youth Services, Nellie Wieserfente from South Africa, who's the co-founder of Spring Age, and Marien Mendy from Germany, who runs Sustainable Agriculture Supply Chain Project in Ghana with Barclays. If you'd like to come up, and Anthony will, will moderate.
Hello.
Hello.
Ms. Anthony, you've been called Mr. Nice Guy of Banking. Why do you think people call you that? And what are your guiding principles?
Well, I've got no idea, because it's certainly not true. Look, I think, because I choose to stand up and talk about these types of topics, you know, I don't think this is about being nice, I think this is about doing what's right. And I think what's right is having a moral and ethical perspective to business. And it's right, because it's the right thing to do, but it's right, because it's also commercially the right thing to do. If you look around the world, business has lost the confidence of society. But society gives us our license to do business. So if we want to do more business and be more successful, we have to win back that confidence, we have to earn that trust back. And so it's a combination of doing the right thing, but also doing the commercial thing. And what I'm hoping is what we're doing at Barclays, as, as it succeeds, and I believe that it will succeed, can show that you can run an enterprise that is centered around an ethical and moral way of doing things, but also that is commercially successful.
So I have a lot of experience in the corporate world, as well as the nonprofit world. And during your speech, you mentioned, we really need to focus on the broader issues and work together. What are your thoughts on really integrating corporations and nonprofits? I think a lot of corporations donate to nonprofits, but really working together and creating a partnership.
Yeah, yeah. So I think that's a very, a very, very, very good question. As I think about this, it's how can we have an impact? Let's start with the corporations. How can we, as a corporation, have an impact in the world? And for me, it comes down to a series of things. Of course, we can give money, and we give about 50 to 60 million pounds a year to various causes and activities. But that's really a tiny, tiny thing, right? The second thing is, how do we do business in the world? How do we manage our environmental impact, for example? How do we change our business practices to address issues in society? And we have a great example of this in Barclays. In Barclays, we hire lots and lots of people every year to work in our branch, retail branch network. And yet, in the UK, like in a lot of other parts of the world, there's a huge problem with youth unemployment. And that problem is basically a failure of the education system. And so people who don't have basic math and literacy can't get a job at Barclays, because they fail all of our standard sort of application criteria. So we took So, we took that problem and said, "How can we help the people who can't get through our screening to get jobs?" So we created an apprenticeship programme. We had a different type of screening. Provide a lot of mentoring. It's a year-long programme. We train people in basic math and literacy. We give them training in banking. And we've got 1,000 of those people now in the UK. And 80% of those people were on benefits from the state before. So, we've taken a real problem and we've changed the trajectory of those people's lives. And the reason why that's important is because when you affect one person's life, you don't just affect their life. You affect the people around them. You affect their families, their friends, their communities. You change the trajectory of somebody's life through those sorts of opportunities. And it's a very, very important thing. And the third thing that we can do, of course, is provide products and services that address real needs in society that are being unmet. Now, when I think about how we would work with, you know, so broadly defined third sector or civil society, for me, it's about finding partners that we can both add value together to create a better outcome that we can achieve individually. That may be because you have skills and expertise that we don't have. It may be because you've got a great solution, but you need resourcing. And resourcing can't just be funding. One of the big things that I think that civil society does not understand about business is, broadly speaking, the last thing business wants to do is write a cheque. Not because they don't want to give money. They've got money, but they've got limited resources like everybody has. But they want to get something for that money. And what they want to do is they want to get opportunities for their colleagues to volunteer. They want to get opportunities for their colleagues to sit on boards. They want to get opportunities for companies to bring capability to solve these problems. So, I think we have to ratchet up the engagement and the meshing between civil society and business if we're going to achieve some of these things. And if I think about some of our best partnerships, one we have in something we call Bankion Change, which is basically providing very small savings structures so that people can then build small businesses through loans. That's a partnership with Plan and Care International. It's a great example of our expertise in banking and their experience in dealing with social problems in the developing world, coming together and meshing and creating a much, much better outcome. Thank you.
So you speak about the purpose and the values of Barclays, and it's all well and good establishing those. But when we have that mindset and we have the opportunities, we still find a lot of challenges trying to implement those new innovative business ideas. So how do we really break down those bureaucratic hurdles? How do we really make it happen? And how do we, as we say, help people achieve their ambitions in the right way internally within an organisation such as Barclays?
Well, change is really hard. Ask anybody who's ever tried to go on a diet, give up smoking or whatever. Change is really hard. Human beings don't like to change. And if you look at the history of corporate life, it's littered with situations where people would launch a new set of cultural initiatives. And they would put a big sign up in the lobby. You know, they'd put it on a mousepad or a baseball cap or a coffee cup or something. And then they'd think the job was done. Actually, when we launched this on January 19th, it was just the start of a very, very long journey. And in many ways, this is like reprogramming a whole organisation. You know, it's not like when your computer sort of jams up and you can just pull the plug out and start over, right? This is about reprogramming, redirecting the organisation around this value and these values and culture. And so, how do we do that? So the first thing that we did was we trained 1,500 people across Barclays to be what we call values leaders. And these people were then sent out across the organisation to evangelise, if you like, what we were doing. And then, every one of our 140,000 people spent half a day talking about these values and what they meant. And we had a lot of very interesting reaction to that because one reaction was, "Well, I find this insulting because you're saying I don't have good values." That was a reaction we got. Another reaction was, "Well, we've seen it all before. This'll pass. You know, I just keep my head down and it'll go away. And then Anthony will get fired and he'll be fine." Why are you laughing? That's not funny. So... But what happened in the course of those sessions was, most people went in either sort of ambivalent or cynical. And most people came out engaged and optimistic. And we know that because we survey people as they come out. And we weren't saying to people, "You don't have good values." I believe that the vast majority of people in Barclays have excellent values. But what we didn't have was we didn't have one core set of values defined for the whole organisation. And that is what we were putting at our heart. And then, when you take the values and look at behaviours, the behaviours are really what's different to the way we ran the place. And we defined the behaviours as well. So under respect, for example, collaboration is a big behaviour. We're not very good at that at Barclays. Under integrity, it's not just about, "Do I do my work with integrity?" It's about, "If I see something that lacks integrity, do I raise my hand and say, 'That's not right'?" So, we did that. For everybody who joins Barclays from now on, they'll go through a day-long programme on all of this. All of the senior leaders, the top 150, will get up, have had two days of training on how to lead this. The next 2,500 people in the organisation are on a two-year programme around how to lead this change. And when we assess people's performance, we're changing the way we measure that, not just to measure what people deliver, but also how they deliver it. And have they delivered it in line with our values?
And if they don't?
And if they don't? So this is the important thing. If they don't, it's not about being punitive if people really are trying hard but don't know how to do it. So if they don't know how to do it, we can help them with that. But if they don't want to do it, then they have to work somewhere else. And I've been very clear about that. And I... And guys, look, you know, and this is where maybe some people would disagree with the Nice Guy of Banking, but... You know, when you want to change a big organisation like Barclays, you have to be very clear about what you want. And it comes back to this, authentic and relentless. Because if I'm not authentic on this, it won't work. So when I had my senior leaders together in November of last year, shortly after One Young World, actually, I said to them, "This is how we're going to run Barclays. And if you're up for it, great. I'm very happy. But if it's not for you, then that's okay. But you have to leave because I'm not going to run the bank with people who aren't going to go on this journey with me." And then, when I wrote to the organisation on January 19th, I was very clear that that is the case. And the evaluation of people on the values has started to happen with the most senior people in the organisation. And there've been some tough conversations where people have been told, "I really don't think you are living this particular value. And by the way, it's affected your overall performance rating. And that's how it should be." Now, you then want to say, "Here's what you can do about it. Here's how you can improve. Here's how we can help you." And hopefully, people will get there. But again, if they don't, then I have to go.
I'm going to ask a question from Mondi Nkosi from South Africa. And I'm asking this question because it also deals with the organisation that I'm in. So, we collaborate with big businesses to come up with innovative ideas. So Mondi is asking, "What are your plans for creating innovation within Barclays? And more broadly, what are your views on actively creating a culture of innovation in a large company?"
Well, for me, innovation is really at the heart of the challenge that sits in the financial world at the moment. And not to be sort of too specific to my own industry, but my own view is that we're at a sort of 100-200-year inflection point in financial services where the nature of technology now means that there's going to be massive automation of the whole banking industry, which has profound consequences for how the organisation works. So, the need for innovation has never been greater. But you don't get innovation by sitting in my office and issuing a command that says, "Okay, now everybody go off and innovate." That doesn't work. It's a bit like what we were talking about, culture change. You can't just say, "I want the culture to change" and then not do anything about it.